The City Council Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs co-posted with the Committee of the Whole met in council chambers on Thursday, April 25th, 2024, 6:00 PM. For the purpose of discussing granting of certain licenses and in ordinance amending in ordinance relative to water and sewer, Chapter 46, Section 35 meters. The second matter only is the one that's co-posted. Notice of this meeting was posted on April 18th, 2024 at 10:05 AM. And everyone here from the committee is attending. We have Counselor Watson felt joining us remotely. And so we will be doing roll call votes tonight. Also joining us, we have Counselor Proznuski, Jerzalo, Counselor Varela, and Council President And also with us from the engineering department is Sam Mustafa, who's going to be talking to us about the ordinance change. First, though, we're going to take up the granting of certain licenses. It's a secondhand clothing and secondhand valuables license. It's for to do to done on 3 Pleasant Street, both of those licenses, and they are all good to go. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcelo. They are terrific company, and I move that we approve the licenses.
Counselor Cohen moves that we return this to the council with a recommendation for approval.
Oh, yes.
Seconded by Counselor Harvey, and I will do a roll call vote on this. Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
Thank you, and myself as a yes. And on to the second one. The second one is the ordinance amending in ordinance relative to water and sewer, Chapter 46, Section 35 meters. And this again is about how we are going to be estimating water meter usage when we can't read the meters. And you have the language in front of you, and I'm going to ask Mr. Mustafa to come to the microphone and give us a little bit of background on this one.
Sure. Thank you. So we started thinking about this in light of a recent event that took place in Newton, Massachusetts, where residents got these outrageous bills, sometimes over $50,000. And the reason for that was that meters, just about every type of meter that's out there eventually will stop working. There's different parts to the meter. So the parts that are problematic are the radio transponders that are usually on the side of the house. So they have about 20-year warranty. 10 years is 100% after the next 10 years, it's prorated. So we are now over 10 years, and we see about 10% of our meters, even though we are constantly repairing. Our water tech is probably doing about 12 to 15 appointments a week. It's about 10% of our accounts have to be estimated because we're not able to get a read. So just to give you an example, our most recent billing cycle, we had a total of 3,390 quarterly bills and 970 monthly. Of those, 316 quarterly bills had to be estimated, and 135 bills monthly also had to be estimated. So there's two ways to do it. Either we manually go in and have an estimate, or we, the system, Munis, is able to do that for us. We just set the parameters. And the way that the current ordinance is worded is that when we are not able to get a read, that the water taker shall be billed on the basis of 200 gallons per day per inhabitant. And it's impossible for us to determine how many people live in a certain building. And sometimes these estimates may go as long as like four, five, six quarters. So it's very difficult. Our goal is to make sure that we don't want to either overestimate or underestimate. So once the water tech gets into the buildings, we get the exact water read, and if we have overestimated, then we have to give a massive credit, you know, rebate. And if they have underestimated, you know, then they get this large bill. The next bill will say it will have an adjustment. So in either case, the residents are left unhappy because now they have this huge bill because maybe two years that they haven't been, same thing that happened in Newton. Those bills were actually true, like this water had been used, but they had been receiving lower estimates. When they, when we owe money, the conversation is less difficult because custom, the residents are usually happy, but it's still wrong because they basically have been paying and giving the city this basically a tax-free loan. So we looked at several options, and going by historical average is the best one. And the language that you guys have in front of you will lace out how we're going to play on doing it. We usually go by the last 12 reads, which even out over the, you know, if it's monthly, there's 12 months in a row, and if it's quarterly, that's three years. Usually we find out that, you know, if a family of four, typically if we look at their average for the last two years, we can get very close to their actual usage if we need to get an estimate. So I'll take any questions. I don't know.
Can you talk a little bit about the fail rate of the meters and what we're doing proactively to address that?
Yes. So the, it's about, I would say, it's about 10% of the meters. And even though we've, like I said, the water technician, this is 90% of his job is visiting these meters, like we're sending out letters. The bills, if the residents receive an estimate, it will stay there that this is an estimate or has been manually entered. So that's considered notice enough. On top of that, we would have sent out separate letters letting customers know that, I mean, the residents know that the technician needs to come in and address this meter because we're not getting a read. The MIUs, the transponders, if they're within warranty, we're making sure that we're sending them back and getting all the credit that we can. We're also in the process of having a pilot for some better meters that are going to be less costly and are going to get us more accurate reads, and they have a 20-year warranty. So we're looking at a pilot of $10,000. And right now, we're, we have about four different vendors that we're considering. And the new meters have the MIU built right in it, but we haven't made a decision yet on which, what's going to be the final brand. But we're looking to at a better, more compact unit that gives us better read and also allows for the residents, like the interface, they can go in and look at their usage, they can put alerts, it's somebody's away, and then there's like water running, they'll get a text message. Right now, we don't have those features, but they're possible now with some vendors.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, Chair Marcelo, not being a member of the committee through you, to Mr. Mustafa. Sam, thank you so much for coming tonight. Just kind of respond, responsible for this, so I'm so sorry. I'm glad you're here. This is something I definitely want to talk about. We've got two questions to start. When it comes to the meters themselves, I know you guys are looking at other companies, and I'm very glad you guys are. What's the cost of a residential meter?
So there is several costs. So we're looking at the, there is the meter, the actual meter where the water is going to go through. There is a register head that goes on top of it, and there is MIU, which is the radio transponder unit. And then the price is also different depending on the size of the meter. If we're looking at the 5.8, we are looking with installation, it's about $500. So it's not cheap. But, and then again, they go to like .75, one inch, one and a half, two inch. There's like the bigger meters, obviously, they're more costly.
Excellent. My second question was about the language here. So what it, when I'm reading here, it says that for individuals, you will take an historical average if you guys can't read the meters. Is that correct? And then for commercial and industrial use, you guys will also, I guess, utilize the deduct meters as well? Is that how it's written?
No. So basically, the idea is that we will, in every case, use historical averages. So for residential, it's basically, we're going back, we can go back in Munis, even if somebody just moved in a home, but we can go back, like they've lived there only four quarters, we can go back three years, four, five years, right? So we haven't specified the number of periods because let's just say, somebody bought a house and they've been living there for four quarters, but the person before them maybe had a smaller family and they had lower usage, then we probably would go back only four periods, right? For the commercial, it's going to be similar, but we left it open because there are some businesses that are seasonal, and their usage is considerably higher, for example, during the summer months or fall, and some close during the winter. So we just, we're not gonna, the difference for residential or commercial is, for residential, there's pretty much no difference because if you're going to average in four quarters, like there is slight increase, but it's not that big. For commercial, it's a huge increase. So we're not going to give them a heavy bill in winter when they have no usage, even though their historical average might say so. Like if we average high usage, high usage, and then no usage, there's going to be somewhere in the middle. So that's why we left at the wording for commercial accounts, but it's still going to be like, it's just going to be adjusted for periods where they have really low usage. And there is, for example, ice makers, and we don't want them to be paying when they have, they're using very little water, like in the winter. But in the summer months, when they use, they make, and they produce a lot, or car washes. So that's why we left it open. The language is a little bit different. The language on the deduct meter, so deduct meter is when residents installs it for irrigation purposes. And sometimes those meters, they work, they function, but the main meter might, is not functioning, right? But, so we're going to use the variance. So if you know that out of all the water that's being used, 50% is going to irrigation, then we know how to figure out how much water. So we'll go based more on the variance. Again, our goal is to always be as accurate and as close as possible to the actual usage. We don't want to over or underestimate. So we wanted to cover all bases. If there is a deduct meter, and that one is showing a read, and we know historically deduct is responsible for 50% of the usage, then we can figure out what the total consumption is.
Okay. I guess a follow-up to that would be, when you talk about utilizing that deduct meter for figuring out an average, I'm assuming that'd be the average for the year?
No, the deduct meter, so if we're getting a read, usually, so the water being used is going through the main meter, and then if you use it for irrigation, that water is going to go through the deduct meter. So if, let's just give you an example, 1,000 gallons is being used in the household, and 500 of that is used for watering outside. So then if we know 500, and historically, half the water is being used for irrigation, then we can figure out. And if you don't know what, how much is, the household is consuming because the meter is not sending a signal, then we can figure it out. So that would give us a better and closer estimate than if we went and used the historical average.
Okay.
And then there, again, there's going to be accounts, like this is not going to cover all cases, there's going to be, there is one-off accounts, for example, like sometimes you have residents that one quarter they had outrageous usage, or maybe something happened that they have really, really high usage, like if they, on average, they spend about 4,000 cubic feet, then one quarter they're at 12,000. We would leave that out. We're looking for like historical averages that give us more realistic picture.
Okay. That makes me, thank you, sleep at night because someone like me personally, we use in the summer about 20,000 gallons per month, but it's only for about three to four months. So I can see that there's some residents that do have a deduct meter that do irrigate, and a lot of times it's going to be more usage than what you're seeing in your household. So I just wanted to, so it's really up to you guys, case by case, really compromising and seeing what the average is.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcelo, through you to Mr. Mustafa. So it seems to me that the best methodology for doing this is to have a consistent number of quarters, okay? Because everyone has seasonality to their usage, okay? I mean, if you're a farmer, you may be more in the farming months. But, you know, I come from the solar industry, we use 13 months. And the reason we use 13 months is because the assumption is always that the current month or the month before is always an estimate if there's an issue. Have you thought about something like that, like four quarters plus a month?
Yeah, we actually thought about more, it's actually, we're using 12 periods. So if it's a quarterly customers, that's three years' worth of averages. And like I said, if we're able to see in Munis, so if there is instances where something happened that like it's, the usage is beyond what it, like normal occurrence, then we can take that number out. But yeah, we went to 12 periods because that would cover monthly customers, and also 12 quarters, it's more than averages out.
So that's for people who have at least three years of ownership, but if it's less than that, I would just recommend that you use 13 months if it's less than eight, two years.
And we, so the account, even if they have less than that, it will show the account, the water account, even the previous owners, and we are able to take them, like we will definitely use at least a year worth of data. The only time that we would not include three years' worth of data is if the usage is clearly not. So if a family of six moves into a home, but before maybe a family of two lived there, obviously the usage is not going to be applicable. But yeah, we would try to use at least a year worth of data, but we're shooting for three and looking for these outliers that would throw off the true average. Thank you.
Anyone else? Proznuski.
Thank you, Chair Marcelo, not being part of the committee. Sam, I heard you mentioned that the average single-family home water meter is going to be 500, about $500, correct?
Yes, about, about that much, yes.
It's an estimate, but that's not being picked up by the homeowner that's, the city is making those changes over?
Yes.
Are all the, all the meters, if you make a decision on what company and which ones, are all the meters in the city going to be changed?
No, they wouldn't be changed all at once. So our plan is to have this pilot. It's looking good right now. The, the numbers are promising. There is two other municipalities that have adopted them, and I have spoken to both of them. So they're very happy, Summerwood and Bridgewater. And so the numbers look promising. And these are costs that, like if we look at what we're currently spending, it's like we already, so these meters are now out of warranty or slowly getting out of the warranty. So the city is incurring a cost. And now, we want, we, even with the new, the existing meters, they're going to need to be replaced. It's just, there is normal wear and tear, and these devices, they will fail over time. So I would say the true cost would be like the additional cost. But if we're getting better reads and the residents are going to be happier, I mean, it's going to be up to the city councils ultimately to decide. But 10,000 was going to give us enough data that I hope I will come before you to say, you know, look at the historical numbers that what we were getting, what we are getting now, and the interface is clearly, is way better than what, right now, the customers, they don't have anything, they just get the bill every three months or every month.
And on a brighter note, during your presentation, and thank you, by the way, for coming in so well-prepared, you stated that these, these new meters have the ability to be able to interface with the, with the homeowner so that the homeowner can tell probably at any time that they want how much water is being used, correct?
Yeah. And so they'll have the same interface that we have. So currently, I can go into any address or account, and I can see the usage by the hour. So if you can see like if there is a running water or anything, historical usage, and that, the residents will be able to have that. They'll be able to just open an account, they just need an email and set up, it's very simple to set up an account, and they can put reminders, they can look at their historical usage, they can see if there's anything leaking, like running toilet.
So in other words, one step further would be if you go away on vacation and you're worried about your water pipes, especially during the wintertime for people who may spend some time in, in the warmer climate. They can monitor their water usage.
Yeah.
At a distance and save themselves a whole bunch of money on, on water alarms and things like that. So good. All right. Thank you for that.
Can I just take Counselor Watson felt first? Counselor Watson felt?
Thank you, Chair Marcelo, through you, and to Mr. Mustafa. I just have a quick question.
Can you start over again? Sorry.
Sure. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just was, it was the preamble, it was, thank you, Chair Marcelo, and through you to Mr. Mustafa. I have a question just with regards to the historical data. Is there, is the historical data that you would use, regardless of the timeline, reflective of actual usage? Or would it be, is there ever a scenario where historical data would be actually based on a documented estimate that was previously done?
So the estimate will never be exactly what the actual is. It will either be, either overestimate or underestimate. Our goal is to get as close as possible to that number so the residents don't get a huge bill, or they're, we're not, they don't have, like we owe them money, and they basically...
Yeah, sure. No, I understand the concept. I think my question is, you said you're going to use historical data to generate the estimate. Is the data, the data points themselves, are those reflective of actual usage?
Yes.
Or is there ever a scenario where historical data is reflective of a previous estimate?
No, those previous estimates will be taken out. We only use actual data. So if there was periods where that have been estimated, those would not be used.
Excellent. Thank you. Just before I have my next question, I wanted to just let everybody know, I'm in an Uber, I'm not driving my vehicle. So if there are concerns about that, I am in the backseat of a car. So that I could join this meeting and make it to City Council in time for our 7 o'clock start. I think one of the things I think I could use some clarification on as well is just that period of time, you know, I'm listening to the conversation around 12 components, right, the 12 increments, whether it's monthly or if it's quarterly, if that's how the people are paying. There is a large difference in time. So can you tell me, is the, is the basic minimum as long as you can go back for the people who live in that building? Is that the principle?
The principle is, it's, you need at least a year worth of data because usage varies by weather quite a bit. So 12 periods would be for the monthly customers, but we, there's, there's no limit, we can use 24 or 36 periods. So also 12 periods for quarterly, just because there's 12 data points, so it'd get us a better average. But this would kind of even out. So let's just say you had 10, 6, 4, 10, right? Or let's just say they added up to, I don't know, 32, so the average is going to be eight, right? So now for estimated for, for quarters, then even though in those quarters where they have low usage, right, then it's going to even out because if we put 8, 8, 8 for the next four quarters, it's still going to be 32, even though they don't correspond to the actual quarter. So in one quarter where you actually use six, you get a bill for eight, but the next quarter where you used 10, you get a bill for eight, it kind of evens out.
Yep.
So it's, it's very common that once a meter, like we send the letters, people look at the estimates, but it just tells you there in the language is, people oftentimes miss it, and even on the letters that we send to the residents, about half of them like respond, which is good. Like we're booked out all the way to May with appointments, like usually a month and a half in advance. But most people will throw them away, so even though they get the notice that, hey, your technician needs to come in. So it's very common for the residents who are getting estimates to be getting estimates for a number of quarters in a row.
I think what I'm after is the, I think what I'm getting after with this three years versus one year is the accuracy of the data that's available. So is there, you know, you were talking about these meters and their life, the sort of life cycle of these meters, and has, can, you know, all things being equal, has every resident had one of the newer meters at least three years past? Like, like here's the bottom line, how accurate is the data, the usage data that you are going to be using to generate these averages?
No.
And what could the difference be between like three years and one year? Were all those meters running the same? Were they all functioning the same? Was the usage all accurate?
No, the, the usage is very accurate. So in, in our system, it will show when the bill was, the read date, the bill date, and it will tell you like the, the reading on the meter. And it will tell you if it's actual, or if it's been system estimated, or if it's been manually input. So actual reads have the code is A, so we know that's an accurate read. So these meters, they do not, like, so they're mechanical meters, so they, they turn when the water runs through it, and they will not make a mistake against the resident. So if, if anything, it's going to make a mistake, like if they get, if they get worn out over time, they will make, they will under-record. So these reads are very accurate. So even when the technician gets in and we actually get the actual read because the transponder is not working, and that's a common question that we get from residents, they say, no, this can't be right, like maybe the meter is broken, and we can have the meters tested, but it's, it's always been right. And like I said, they will only under-record. There's never been a case that they mistakenly ran faster than they're supposed to because they run as water goes through.
And only, and just to reiterate what I think I heard you say a minute ago, only actual reads will be used as data points in the, in the setting of the, of the average?
So yeah, we only use the actual reads. If there's like 12 periods and four of those periods were estimates, then we will only use eight periods. And those four periods will be skipped.
Excellent. That's exactly my question. Thank you so much. I'm all set.
Okay. Counselor Harvey?
One question. What, the new meters that you guys are looking at, it's the cost difference between the ones we pip, right now have compared to the new ones that you're talking about?
They're, they're close. So that was one of the main driving factors that, you know, we're already, you know, have these ongoing costs servicing the existing meters, so why not, you know, use these funds, or part of a small portion of these funds, 10,000, to get these new meters that are now under warranty for 20 years?
Well, that's the reason I'm asking because just last Friday, I had one of my constituents call me on a Friday night, asking me who to call because her water meter was leaking.
Yeah.
So I called the DPW, and they went right over within an hour and replaced and fixed it. But if they're just taking a $500 meter that we currently have and throwing in another $500 meter that we, similar to the one that's already there, why wouldn't we look into start putting in, I'm sorry, the newer ones in place of that so that we can try to fix the problem as we're fixing problems?
Yeah. No, I, I agree with that, and that's, this is like the first step into actually rolling up, rolling out a bigger project of replacing all the meters. We just want to see right now. So it's, the data is promising, but we will not know until we actually have a sample size that we can see the real benefit. The leaking meter is... The leaking meter is a known issue and it happens. They have, there's a plate that kind of shrinks over time and when there's a change in pressure. So yeah, we have those happen unfortunately, and that's, that's one of the reasons.
And my only other thing would be, I'm not a tech savvy person. I don't need to be looking at my phone to see what my water bill is. There's plenty of them out there that would probably be willing to even pay for a meter where they buy the Nest thermostats and they got this and they got that. It's just, they might, you know, put out a program where, yeah, you can get this meter sooner if, you know, but, I mean, at, at a cost.
Yeah.
I'm well, I'm willing to bet that there's a bunch of tech savvy people out there that would be more than happy to have that meter put in their house at their own cost, just so that they can pay attention to what's going on as far as that goes. I don't know. Just a thought.
Can I just follow up on that? When, with the leaking meters, you're not actually replacing the meter, right? You're just replacing that one, you're replacing that one?
Yeah, it's a gasket.
Yeah. Okay, great. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Marcello, question and two comments. The new meter, will it have the same type of warranty? Because I'm always concerned that a warranty, as it matures, lessens the, the value of the warranty.
So yes, that's true. Right now, we, we haven't finalized which model we're going to use, even the existing vendor to have a new meter that we are also considering. So the warranty is going to be part of, so we're probably going to get like three or four proposals at least. And yes, that's a big part. Typically, it's 20 years, but the first 10 years is 100%. After that, it gradually goes down to 90, 80, 70. But I don't know which model we're going to choose and then...
No, that's fine. I, I think the quality of the meter is, is, and the, and the functionality is probably the most important, but every warranty is meant to be in its strongest point when it's least likely to fail. So I have a couple of comments. I, I, one, before your time, the Sustainability, Energy and Resiliency Chair, John Hayes, promoted this idea that our water bills were almost impossible to read because it was based on, you know, cubic feet and not cubic gallons. And I think, you know, that has changed, but I think having a kind of an interactive that the customer can be involved in, I think is a real plus. And I'm just going to say hurry up with the pilot because it seems to me that if the relative cost of the meters is about the same, we're paying a lot more for the labor to replace the meter on an ongoing basis, especially when it fails. So this sounds great, I'm really excited about it.
Thank you.
Counselor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Marcello, not being a member of the committee, through you too, Sam. So I had a couple of comments. One, kind of to bounce back off of Counselor Cohen's comment. Ever since I've been in this position, I've always tried to advocate for more deduct meters in the city. And if we are doing a pilot program, I would like to see, I'm not telling you what to do, I can't, but I'd like to see you guys incentivize residents to put in more deduct meters in their homes if they already have one. Not only will it kind of create a way where you guys, if there's a failed meter, you guys can have a historical average, but I think that once people understand their usage, they might try to back off on it, especially if people are using it for irrigation. So that's something I would truly like to see going forward for conservation, I think that's great. And also, you know, people save money as well. My second comment would be on the, how you guys are using the deduct meters. Before your time, I've, we've had issues at Cedar Crest Avenue with just establishing a broken meter and what the reading would be. If I was on this committee and I was able to make a motion, my motion would be that the registrar, the registrar shall also take into consideration annual precipitation when dictating historical values. I just, if you guys are using two to three years when it comes to reading that and you're using that deduct meter, it's a little unfair to the resident that maybe in 2021, there is an extreme drought, so there's a usage of water. But in 2022, let's say the precipitation was off the charts. I think that, you know, really establishing that those, you know, within, looking at the data would be mindful for the resident because I think it would, you know, it would benefit the city to take that drought year and be like, well, this is your average, sorry, but that's not necessarily the average. So that's just a thought to the committee. If I did, if I could make a motion, I just want it to be a little more specific on, you know, I, I want to take your, you know, the engineering department's word for it, but in the past, that really hasn't worked out because it's really up to you guys dictating the information. If that was written in ordinance, I think it gives a little more clarity that it's really dependent on weather and precipitation. Thank you.
No, I'm just going to say that there's probably a lot of factors that could go into this. It is only an estimate and you need to get your meter fixed. You know, and you get a letter, it's not like this is, it's not like the goal is to estimate bills for a year, right? It's a bill, should be one bill, right? I, I hear you though. I, I'll see if people want, Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Marcello, through you to Counselor Verella. I'm not going to make that motion for this reason. Looking back at precipitation totals is an estimate in itself because you can't mathematically say, well, we got more water, so someone would use less at their property. So I, I'm going to just say, I'm going to move that we accept what is in front of us with the concept, Counselor Verella, that once we get the new meters, we're going to get a better sense of how, how valid that program is. Because I just don't think like, you know, two years ago, we had a, a lot of rain in July, which is very unusual, and we've had a lot of rain this year, but Sam seems like a terrific and smart person, but for him to estimate like what the relative difference between how much snow or rain or the size of the drought and how much water people would use, I think is more of an estimated quantity. So I'm going to move that we accept, is this accepting the order with a positive, referring it to the council with a positive recommendation?
For first passage.
For first passage, thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Harvey. And we'll do a roll call vote on that. Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. So the motion passes five to zero. Anything else? Seeing none, I will take one final motion. Counselor Davis?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those, oh, roll call vote. Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfeld?
Yes, and I'm literally getting out of the car right now, so I'm sorry, everyone. Thanks.
And myself as a yes. Thank you very much and thank you, Sam, for being here.
Thank you. Have a good night.